Do you want to just move over because since, I mean if you want to.
Oh, this is.
Oh, my cell.
How are you?
I'm doing well.
Yes, you notice the time change?
I saw four o'clock.
Good. Yeah, we had been meeting at, we had been starting at 4:30.
What's that?
Hopefully that works with your schedule.
Sure.
So, I don't know. I give up on this audio visual.
Well, everything's working except for the picture of you guys.
Oh, sorry. Yes. Yeah. Yes, for egg. It's hardly working. I thought it was so. It doesn't make any sense. Oh, now is it? I don't think it's in person because I even have turned it off. So that they don't need to sit in the waiting room either. They have a link. They should be able to get right there.
Hey, how are you guys? Oh, is that what it is? I'll be glad. It's all good. I need to get this.
I didn't realize that.
You made it. I can get how are you all. Welcome back. Thank you. Hi, how are you? Good. How about you? Doing good. Tomorrow, I go see him tomorrow. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping it'll come on. Yeah. So when I call you. I called Ken on my way over. The outlaws come today? He goes, yes. Whether that's why the sheets open.
We can trust them for sure.
I've never been to a guy that's done lunch on his phone. We went five hours ago. So I have this here on my writing base. So adding noise of them walking. Are they at Adam's? So my daughter has nothing to buy. Two different places. Okay. I wonder because they have a nice little spot there for them. Yeah, they do. And we got some box. Uh, two doors to go. So yeah, I keep them there. Nice. It's good. It's good. I like it. Yeah. It's different. I like it. I have had behavior issues since then. No. Whole different ballgame. I've had to learn how to throw them. All the ins and outs of things. I even had to go away grounds, you know. And there's no place to run. So that can't stop. It's not a reason to say no. It's just something.
Safety disclaimer. Councilor Lovewell is not driving right now.
It sounds like a. Oh, my goodness.
Okay, everyone go ahead and turn your microphones on.
And if, so Counselor Morrell is not on yet, correct?
Yeah, just send him a text.
Okay. All righty, well, let's go ahead and get started. So welcome everybody to the Monday, September 23rd, 2024 City Council Meeting. Role call, we have Councillors Kelly, Smith, and Bagley joining us in the chambers. Counselor Terrio and Counselor Lovewell are on Zoom and Counselor Morrell is planning to attend via Zoom as well. Okay, for the invocation, Counselor Smith?
Everybody please join me in the attitude of prayer. We pray for our country at all times, that all citizens are safe, healthy, and happy. We pray for wisdom for all those who guide and govern, help this government body in every situation to know and to do the things that are right and just with soundness of judgment in making vital decisions. We pray for the peacemakers that the Holy Life-Giving Spirit may ever dwell in their hearts and the barriers of fear, suspicion, and hatred may fall. This we pray to the Holy Father. Amen.
If everybody would please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number four on the agenda is our Declaration of Any Conflict of Interest. Is there any councillor who would like to declare a conflict of interest this evening? No? Okay. Item number five is public forum. That was, is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak this evening? Please come on up and state your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Hegelstein. Live at 34 Coolidge. I'm not going to talk about the neighborhood. Okay? So what I am going to ask, I have two things. I'm glad to see that the issue of removing the foundation at 19 Prospect has been completed, it's been greeted, and so forth. My next question is, have proceedings started on the garage yet? Because I knew that was a separate issue from the House and I wondered if things have gotten started on getting moving on that.
We will have an update from our code officer later in the meeting.
Okay. Number two. At last month's meeting, you had the architect here for the police station. And way back when, when that was first conceived for a new station, I was a member of that planning committee. To be quite honest with you, I was very embarrassed by that whole transaction that happened that night. Number one, it's been seven years. Glaciers move faster than this project. And I'm sorry. It shouldn't take seven years. And from what I saw from that meeting when she was here, you're no further along than you were maybe after year one. It's ridiculous. I hate to tell you, you need to make a decision. Either, I was a little embarrassed. I did not feel, in my opinion, that the architect was prepared. And as far as City Council, knowing that, and City Manager, knowing that they were going to be here, City Council and Manager was not prepared for asking the right questions and moving forward with it. It shouldn't take seven years to get to the spot where you are right now. You should be much further along. My recommendation is, if you can't make a decision, you go to the architect, you say, "Give us a couple of options." Give you folks a couple of options, two or three options, and make a decision. Because I hate to tell you, the way it looks is, this is not moving. And it's given the impression that, at least to me, is this really going to fly or not? Because the way that that meeting went, my opinion is, as far along as you were after seven years, we're not going anywhere. It's not happening. You need to make some decisions and move forward. I had the same issue when I worked with the building committee for the new school. I literally had to get up and stop them and say, "Make a decision." You've got to make a decision in order to get things moving and keep them moving. So please, I ask you, if this project is going to move forward.
Tamara, can you hear me?
Please, as a council and city manager, put your heads together and narrow down this thing and let's get it nailed down and move forward. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? No? Yeah?
I'm Gail Hegelstein.
Hello.
And I am also not going to talk about the neighborhood.
I can hear you. I just don't see anybody. Are you seeing anybody at show?
Oh. I'm sorry, Gail. Hang on one second here.
Can you just look in there? The camera's not working. They can't see us, but they should be able to hear us.
Can you hear me, Joan?
Okay, can you hear?
Yep. Can you hear us, Joan?
Can you still hear me?
I can. I don't know if she can hear us. Are we muted? It seems like they can't hear us, though.
And I don't see anything for.
That's Penny's.
Okay, well, go ahead, Gail. We'll get this squared away.
Okay. I am talking about a phone call I received from a friend in California who is a former resident of Caribou and enjoys keeping up with what's going on in her hometown. Gail, did you know? No offense to John. Please do not take this personally. Okay? Your new code enforcement officer is leaving at the end of September. She got the expected response. What she said, oh, and by the way, if they can't find someone, they're going to, hopefully, a regional code enforcement officer. Are you kidding? Seriously? John has been training to be a code enforcement officer for three months. He's gotten some things done and we do appreciate it. We went a year before that with a code, without a code enforcement officer. We had a code enforcement officer who had to be trained, had to take the tests, had to do all the readings and the research and the studying. We need a Caribou City Code Enforcement Officer. We are losing ground. We started to make headway. And now a regional? What is that going to look like? Is a regional code enforcement officer going to be in Caribou in an office once a week? Once a month? Depending upon what the other regions that he's covering? Let's get one for us. Let's get caught up. Let's take care of what needs to be done in this city. Let's put the city first instead of taking the easiest way out. Thank you.
Just to clarify, because I don't think that that's necessarily been something that's been decided at all. Certainly not to my knowledge and I'd like to think that I have some awareness of what's happening. So I think we are trying to advertise for a code enforcement officer for Caribou.
But the aristocratic Republican says, it's right there in the article, perhaps a regional code enforcement officer. You want to know what our neighborhood is saying about that?
Perhaps we'll need a correction in the paper, then.
Let's just get it done. Let's get a code enforcement officer as soon as possible.
Tamara, can you hear me?
Sorry. That's what we're working on. I can assure you of that. There's been no plan to have a regional code enforcement officer.
Good. Let's make sure that doesn't happen.
We can make sure that that's corrected, okay?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just, Judith.
Okay, now I can hear.
The saga continues. Joan, can you hear me? Joan, can you hear me?
It went back to you.
Oh, boys. Okay, well, keep trying. Anybody else from the public who wishes to speak?
I'm just saying Judith because I'm driving, so I don't want to be.
Oh, I can. Okay, I can hear you. Are you getting just the logo for the city council?
Do you want to let them know, Penny? Can they read their? That we can hear them? We can hear them.
I don't know. It's my message. Because I have been coming over here.
Yes. I think it's going to need to be a different message.
I can't see it either. I'm through you and you can see me.
They can't see us, so we're in trouble. Okay. I'm so sorry, everyone. These technical glitches, I tell you. Okay. If there is no one else from the public who wishes to speak? We're going to go ahead and move on to item six under bid openings, awards, and appointments.
Is the sound working?
Danielle, is, can you find anything wrong in there?
No.
Okay.
It's going to be because our switch box is still not in yet.
Is there another way that we can get them to?
I'm just thinking, so if I, I can shut off that speaker and all the sound can go through your computer.
Just one moment, everyone. Just so we can have them be part of the meeting.
If I don't shut off that one, it's just going to keep going.
That's your thing. You're calling, but do you see me? Okay. No, that's okay. Danielle's working on it.
Okay, so can you hear us now, Joan and Tamara?
Yeah, so I can hear. I can hear you all.
Okay. This may have to be how we proceed. Okay. Joan, can you hear me? Okay. Perfect. All right, so we were just on item number six under bid openings, awards, and appointments. And we're talking about 6A, the appointments to the newly reinstated Public Safety Building Committee. And that is on page two of your packets. So at the last meeting, we did vote to reinstate the Public Safety Committee. And I asked at the time of the meeting if anyone was interested to please reach out. And then Penny did send an email out to the council on the 28th of August to see if anyone was interested in that committee. And I did receive feedback from a few councillors at the time. And so I am proposing to reinstate the committee under the same exact duties that it was assigned in January. And Penny can pull that up if we need to take a look at it. And the folks who expressed an interest were Counselor Terrio and Counselor Kelly and myself.
Yes.
Can you hear me okay, Joan? Okay.
Yeah.
So that is my proposal, is that those would be our committee members. And I can serve as the chairperson, as I had in the past, along with Counselor Kelly and Counselor Terrio. What are the wishes of the council?
Are you asking for a motion?
I am. Yes, I am.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, discussion? I don't know if they can hear me or not. It seems like there's a lag in there. Bagley?
I can, I can hear you.
Okay. Bagley?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Terrio?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Okay. Item number 6B is an appointment of the city's MMA voting delegate to the MMA Annual Meeting, and this is on page three of your packet.
Move to designate Carl Grant as the official voting delegate to the MMA Annual Business Meeting on Wednesday, October 2nd, 2024.
I second it.
Moving and seconded, further discussion? Bagley?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Terrio?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. All right, that was easy. Congratulations, Carl.
Thank you.
Item number seven, under reports by staff and committees, 7A. We do have some folks here from RSU 39 this evening with some updates and also a presentation on a referendum question. So Superintendent McCall, I don't know who is speaking first, so.
I'm just going to take a couple of minutes of time and then I'm going to hand it over, but I want to say good evening and, and thank you for allowing us the time on your agenda as I know they get very busy and very full quickly. So before I do turn it over to the Director of the Caribou Tech Center, I just wanted to call attention to a couple of documents that I think you should have in front of you. One is the RSU 39 2023-2024 Year of End Report. So I won't take up a lot of time because last year I presented to you and kind of went through some of the document with you. But it's pretty much so the same, only it's updated information about our school district as of, at the end of last year, and updated data. So if you have questions about that or would like to speak with me or one of the other administrative team members, please feel free to reach out and I'd be happy to talk with you in more detail about the information in this document. And the other thing I'd like to call your attention to is what we're calling just a save the date. This will be the first time that we're going to be actually inviting community, people to come to an RSU 39 Finance Forum. Often, as we're midway through the budget season or after the budget season, we hear some suggestions or opinions or thoughts about community citizens. And sometimes it's after the fact, if you will. So we thought this is a good opportunity to invite people to join us and share some of those thoughts and suggestions about different ways that as a school district that we might increase our revenues and decrease costs. So hopefully you'll be able to join us. That's going to be October 16th and it'll be from 6:00 to 7:00. We will be having a school board meeting immediately before that, which we'd love to have you attend that as well. That starts at 5:30 at the Caribou Performing Arts Center. So on behalf of the RSU 39 Board members and myself, I hope to see you there. And we will be distributing these once we get in a more detailed invitation forum. For right now, it's just save the date until we can work out the final details. So if you don't have any questions for me or comments in regards to those two items, at this time, I'd like to introduce you to Amy White. She is our Director for the Caribou Regional Tech Center. This is her second year with us in RSU 39. And she took the opportunity to apply for a grant. And she'll tell you more about it, but it does have a piece in that grant that would allow for you to approve it so that we can move forward with on the referendum. So at this time, I'm going to let Amy White come up and speak with you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. McCall, and thank you for having me this evening to talk about some exciting opportunities that we have at the Caribou Tech Center. So starting about a year ago, all 27 tech centers in Maine were informed that there was a $20 million bond in the state of Maine that was provided through state subsidy, mostly by way of COVID relief funding. At the time, we were allowed to begin the process of applying for a $2 million piece of the pie of that $20 million grant. After applications were completed, the Maine Department of Education then scored all of the grant applications and selected 11 schools to pass the first barrier of funding for equipment needs, along with any renovations that would be needed within the school system to accommodate the equipment purchases that the tech center supplied for. So before you, you have a list of the equipment that I included that is definitely needed within our center. This updated equipment would allow us to be cutting edge with what the current industry recommendations are within the workplace. So you'll see many different pieces, from a loader for our large equipment program to a fire truck for our fire science students, a law enforcement cruiser for our criminal justice class. There are some pieces that would be cutting edge for agriculture, from a drone sprayer to a corn planter. All programs within Caribou Tech Center were asked to provide what recommendations the instructors had to me for equipment that they would need. All instructors all have an advisory committee that they consult with to, that consists of parents, students, secondary educators, post-secondary educators, business and industry representatives. All of those folks had some input on what they recommended as well to be included in the grant writing process. So at this point, like I shared, we're one of 11 that have passed that first barrier. The second barrier that we face is whether or not the taxpayers support this, this bond being issued to Caribou Tech Center. So a couple of things I do want to just talk briefly about, one of which is CTE funding. Career Technical Education funding comes to the EDU 279 in a separate form from the regular district budget. We are funded very, very separately. Most of our funding model is based on student enrollment. separately. Most of our funding model is based on student enrollment. All of our programs are required to maintain a 13-student average over a three-year period of time, and if we maintain that student average, we're reimbursed fully for teacher salaries, benefits, some supply line items. So our budget is totally separate from the regular RSU 39 budget, and we have to live within that budget. So the other piece that I just kind of want to share with you is that this bond is state subsidized. The $20 million has already been earmarked for career and technical education in the state of Maine, but it does require a referendum vote, because it's being paid for in the fashion of a bond. So because of that, I'm coming to you and hoping that you will support seeing the need of equipment upgrades for the Caribou Tech Center. We do plan to, within our regular budget, meet the needs of any updated equipment, you know, down the line, or hope that there are more grants like this that come to us in the future. Any cost of building maintenance that needed to be done to accommodate this equipment was also included in the grant, so we don't foresee any additional expenditures coming our way in any of the regular budgetary lines. With that said, I'm open to questions if you have any. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Is the bond going to be paid back by state taxpayers, or by, or the amount that we're being awarded? Is that going to be allocated to Caribou taxpayers to pay?
It is paid for through state subsidy. It's already earmarked. It's a $20 million earmarked specific to CTE equipment upgrades. And so my fear is, obviously, that if taxpayers don't support it, that money will just go to one of the other 27 tech centers in Maine.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
That's helpful, actually, to know that.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Does anybody else have questions?
I don't.
That was kind of my question, too, Joan. Okay. Oh, Joan?
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
I'm just making sure. I heard Dan's question, and I'm just making sure that there's no actual money coming out of the Caribou taxpayers' pocket, no increase in their taxes for this support, and if somebody should renege on payback, are we responsible for that?
That's a great question, and the answer to your question is that this money is already earmarked, $20 million bond earmarked to career and technical education in the state of Maine, which is all state subsidized, so that it does not come to local taxpayers. It will not be an increase in local taxes. As far as this bond, I'm not saying that the school budget won't be an increase. I certainly can't speak to that, but our hope is always to make sure that we don't put that on the taxpayers. But this bond is specific to career and technical education, so $20 million is going to get spent somewhere in the 27 tech centers in Maine. We just hope it's coming to us. And as you can see, we did apply for approximately $1.6 million of equipment upgrades to the Caribou Tech Center.
I guess I'm wondering why, you're in RSU, we really have no, there's no connection here. You're a separate entity, we're a separate entity. Sometimes that's not the way it is, because Fairfield and some of the other towns are in with the city as we used to be. So I guess I'm wondering why we have to, as taxpayers or as a city, support that for you, because you are a separate entity?
That's a great question. It's my understanding that this specific money, because it was put into a bond, does require a referendum vote, but Mr. Bushard's here, and I don't know if he might be able to better answer that question, but any bond, any, any time that there is money put into a bond, it does require a referendum vote.
Okay, so you're, you're speaking of having to support the taxpayers, or the city's supporting a ref, for this question to go to referendum?
That's correct.
Okay.
So basically, to clear, so just so there's a place to put it on the ballot for the voters to?
Correct, and we did have some language that was presented, and I believe you have a copy of that as well, that, potential language that was recommended from Drummond and Woodson to be placed on the ballot and for that vote to, to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Lovewell, do you have any questions?
Hi, Kelly.
I have been placing some, just little snippets out on the Caribou Tech Facebook page, and I do intend to, you know, invite the news and the paper in to do a story as well, just to educate as best I can, and hope that we can get some community support behind this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Bushard, did you have something you wanted to add? I thought maybe, okay, come on up.
Mark Bushard, the Business Manager at RSU 39. Because the RSU is made up of two-member communities, Caribou and Stockholm, we need the input and the, you know, the signatures of the, the city government, or the town governments, because we are part of, in our case, we're part of Caribou and Stockholm. The bonds are technically the responsibility of the local taxpayers. So if, in the event that the state went broke, defaulted, then theoretically, we would be subject to make, make the payments. But as Mrs. White stated earlier, the money's already set aside and in a bank, so there's no, you know, there's no way the state is gonna default on it. But that's the purpose of having it set up that way, and why it has to go through the Maine Bond Bank. So we're essentially taking out a, if the bond is approved by the voters, a loan for seven years, and essentially, the state gives, gives the RSU the money for the, the interest and principal payments for a particular year, and then the RSU makes the payments to the Maine Bond Bank. It's just a pass-through, a couple journal entries, and basically, that's, that's it. So, but there's absolutely no increase to the, to the Caribou or Stockholm taxpayers whatsoever for this bond, completely, completely funded by the state of Maine. Any questions?
Can't think of a better deal than that.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. All right, what are the wishes of the council? We do have to, you know, if we choose to countersign for this, we would need to vote on that.
I'll make a motion of the Caribou City Council countersign the RSU 39 referendum warrant notice of election.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Bagley?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell? I think that was an "I."
Yeah, I saw, I saw an "I," okay.
Okay. Oh, yeah. All right, yeah.
Terrio?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. All right. Thank you all for being here. Okay, up next, we have a report from the Municipal Buildings Committee on the fire and station improvements. So it's on page 12. With the permission of the City Council, the City of Caribou has applied for several grants, so that the current fire station can be improved to provide a healthier environment for fire and EMS personnel who work 24-hour shifts. The systems in place are inadequate. It was determined in 2022 that work was needed. To date, staff have replaced the generator with a properly-sized unit with a FEMA grant. Other work that has been done is the pellet boiler and silo removed, air handling equipment removed, and a backup boiler installed. With the passage of the 2024 federal budget, the congressionally-directed spending request from Senator Collins for $1,358,357 was passed, so the money is now secured. Here is where the funds in the capital stack are coming from. ARPA funds of $234,340. This was from the city's NEU appropriation, which was voted so it could match county ARPA funds. There was a budget allocation in 2022 of $835,000. The county ARPA money remaining is $106,643, and the congressionally-directed spending request from Senator Collins was $1,358,357, and this was based on a project cost of $2,150,000. So the funding available is $2,534,340. The City Council Municipal Buildings Committee has met twice since the last funding was secured, and I would note, we do not have access to that yet. It has been secured, but we don't have access. The priority for improvements is to install a sprinkler system, install a fire alarm system, smoke and carbon monoxide detection, install an air exchange system for the living quarters, dorm and restroom upgrades to provide accommodation for all genders, and devise engineering and administrative controls to keep contaminated articles away from living areas. The proposal for proper treatment of contamination would be to move the fire chief and the administrative assistant to the first floor of the Lions Building. This will also require some upgrades in the building, including smoke and carbon monoxide detection, some new windows, and heat pumps. The next step in the process would be to put out a request for proposals for the architectural and engineering work that needs to be done to decide which items that the city can afford right now, and get a plan that can be put out to bid. Okay. Does anybody have any questions about this?
So what you're asking for is authorization for $2.5 million to be spent somewhere, but we don't have a plan yet for that. You, you have some items here that you want to look at?
So the, the plans have really been discussed since 2022, and the Municipal Buildings Committee has been working on it the last couple of years.
Yeah, so, but the list of things that you list, you know, in that third paragraph, are the types of things that that 2.5 will pay for?
Correct.
Okay.
And a lot of that, we had to specify in the grant funding that we had.
Yeah. Okay.
What are the wishes of the council?
Motion to approve the, the, motion to advertise an RFQ for architectural and engineering work for a fire station project.
I second it. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Bagley?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell?
Hi.
Smith?
Hi.
Terrio?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Okay, item number 7C is a report from the Highway Protection Committee on streetlights, and I don't know if Councilor Terrio wanted to take this one? Manager Thompson, whoever, would like to?
I can do it. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The City Council Highway Protection Committee has met to discuss streetlights multiple times this year. After the first meeting, the committee requested that the staff in the police department identify dark areas in Caribou. After looking at the list and during some nighttime drive-by, the committee looked at the list and met again to prioritize 30 poles where streetlights could be placed in neighborhoods identified as dark areas. That list is on the following page. The next step is to forward the list to RL Todd Electric, who has the city's contract, to switch, switch lights over to LED fixtures. Tim Todd from RL Todd Electric and his crew visited each site to determine if there was secondary power at the pole. If so, they are cost savings for the, if so, there are cost savings for those installations. It was determined that there are five poles that will need secondary power. Each fixture has a cost of $768, which equals $23,040. Secondary power is then estimated to be $250 for the first light, and $125 for each additional, which are four. $750, making a total of $23,790. The money will come from the LED lights reserve account, G147700, which has a balance of $88,575.
You have a question?
Yeah, Joan, I wasn't at that, that, that second meeting, but the number went from 25 to 30.
Yes.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure that.
We actually had 30, but when I got the, the information back from RL Todd, they were saying it was 25. So we were, we were talking about 25, but when you counted them, they were still the 30, yeah. Well, I have to say that I am just so happy this is moving forward. I hope it's gonna move forward. I hope that we can make that motion, because people have been wanting their streetlights for quite some time now, so.
We discussed, in the committee, we discussed it quite in-depth.
Yeah.
At the first meeting, we went through, by process, to make sure what lights, it wasn't, it wasn't slapshot. There was some, some time invested.
That's great. All right, what are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion that approves the recommendation of the City Council Highway Protection Committee to install 30 LED streetlights. And be funded, the location is Caribou, to be funded by the LED lights reserve account, G1-47700, just to clarify where the funds are coming from.
And I have it wrong in there.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Further discussion?
For 30.
For 30, yeah. Bagley?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Lovewell? Smith?
Hi.
Terrio?
Hi.
Hi, motion carries. Okay, item number 70 is our August financial report. We have our finance director here with us this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors, and manager. Presenting the August financial statements. Page 16 is the narrative. I'll be reading from page 17. Assets on hand at the end of August of 2024 is $19,136,423.47. We had commitment late July, so money started coming in from taxes. Our cash balance at the end of the month has increased to $6,157,821.83. Three-quarters of the way down the page, we collected $2,367,167.86 of total commitment, which was $9,874,869. And so far through the end of August, we've collected 28% of our total commitment. Compared to last year at the same time, it was at 14%, and that's just because of the difference in the commitment dates from last year to this year. Moving over to the next page, the liabilities at the bottom of the page were at $13,031,089.89. Moving over to page 22, our fund balance at the top of the page, it was $6,105,412.58. Moving over to our expenses for the month on page 24, we had $1,144,698.80 spent in August, bringing our budget to 63.6%, and that's about 2, 2.9% under budget for the first eight months of the year. Moving over to the revenue statement on page 29, our revenues for the month came in at $1,354,491.5, putting our overall revenue for the first eight months at 80%, 80.7%, which is about 14% higher than the budget through the first eight months. Exize tax came in at $174,831.96 for the month. At year-to-date, we're at $1,170,736.95, and we are currently 7.9% over budget for the excise line. Revenue sharing is doing well. We came in at $241,094.20. Year-to-date, we're at $1,514,641.41, and that is over budget 7.6%, or about $155,000. and forty-one dollars and forty-one cents, and that is over budget 7.6% or about 155,000 dollars through the month of August. And last but not least, we're going over to page 34. And again, that shows our history of our cash balances. And like I said, August, we had commitments, so we were at 6.2 compared to last year. At the same time, we are at 4.8. And these are ending balances, they're not what was collected through the month. So that's what we had on hand at the end of the month. Any questions?
Yeah, we're 7.9% to 7.6% over. That's for the month, right?
Yeah.
Just for the month, no?
Uh, no, that's for the year-to-date.
For the year-to-date, so.
Yeah, we're doing very well for excise tax and for revenue sharing.
Better, or that number can go higher.
Yeah, potentially we go, go higher.
Go higher, so it can't go lower, so that's, that's good news.
Well, it could go lower if we had a bad month, but generally, it doesn't fluctuate very much from month to month, so. But year-to-date, we're over almost 8%.
That's good.
Yep. People are still buying vehicles.
2.9% under budget for the expenses seems, seems good.
Yep.
Is there, is there quite a steep curve at the end of the year for expenses?
Um, no, because after commitment, we did, we did expense our capital, so capital's already expensed. The 2.9% is, if you look at the police department, they're only at 53%, and we know that they're understaffed right now, although he has hired three full-time officers within the last month. So we should be getting back on track on our expenses, but that's where we're saving a little bit on, on staffing through the first eight months of the year.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
Like the graphic. Nice, a good one.
I try to rotate them throughout the year.
Thank you very much.
I do like that you do that. That's very helpful.
All right, what are the wishes of the council?
To accept the financials as presented.
I second it. Moved and seconded, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Carl.
All right, item number 7E is our blighted property report, and we have Code Enforcement Officer Gibson with us this evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your continued commitment to the betterment of Caribou. Briefly, I'll just provide an update on properties that have been taken care of or that are in the works or being taken care of. 1253 Prescott Road, which is owned by Mick Mack Housing, I talked to him this week on the phone, and the court has ordered an October 15th move-out date, so we have to wait at least until October the 15th for the court-ordered move-out date. Their plan, if the house is salvageable, is to rehab the house and to put someone else in the house. If not, they intend to demolish and dispose of it, okay? 1284 Prescott Road, they moved to Florida and indeed shipped all of those cars down to Florida with them, so the cars are gone. 61 Washburn Street is scheduled to be demolished. Don't have a date, but she wants it done yesterday, so I would assume as soon as she can get the people out, that will be demolished. 23 Hoover, the vehicle has been removed from the front yard. 101 Glen has been mowed. 189 Limestone has been cleaned up, and the junk vehicle has been removed. 33 Bradley, the trash has been cleaned up. 12 Midland has been mowed. 31 Vaughn has been mowed, and the trees have been cut. 91 Collins has been mowed and cleaned up. 20 Pioneer has been mowed and cleaned up. However, there is now what I would consider a junk vehicle in the property. So I was told last week that that's going to be moved, but that hasn't happened yet. So that's an ongoing situation there. 7 Water Street, she, I talked with her on the phone at length. Basically, they have absolutely nothing. They have no possessions, they have no savings, they have nothing to do anything with. She wanted to give us the deed to the property, which all that does is transfer the problem from them to us. She said, you're welcome to take us to court, but there's absolutely nothing to get. So that's where we stand with the owners of 7 Water Street. 5 Lower Linden says that she wants to sell the house as it is. That's the one that's across from Sleeper's, a burned-out house. She intends to work on the house and try to sell it as it is. 816 Fort Fairfield Road, there was a structure fire there, I believe, a year, year and a half ago, that is scheduled to be demolished. 19 Catatina needs mowed. The owner lives in Texas, and I spoke with him last week, and he intends to have somebody there this week. 31 Home Farm Road, we have sent a letter, it needs to be mowed. 12 Lynn, we have sent a letter, there's rubbish that's collected outside the perimeter of the house. 96 Main Street, there's a letter that's been sent for a demolition of a partially collapsed barn. 378 West Prescott Road, we've sent a letter for rubbish that needs to be mowed and a junk vehicle that needs to be gotten rid of. And 475 West Prescott Road, we've sent a letter that they need to mow the lawn. As you know, 15 Prospect is an ongoing situation. It has been cleaned up, that's been completed. A letter has been sent ordering them to stop using the garage in a residential manner. That's the first step in that process, and that's where we're at with 15 Prospect. That's all that I have on my list.
Thank you.
Okay?
And I don't know if you know this or not, but what would, so once that letter has been sent to 15 Prospect, how much time do they have to?
Two weeks.
Two weeks, okay.
Is, is the standard, which is what we follow.
Yep.
And so that would put it at October 4th, which is a Friday.
So if they haven't vacated the garage space by Friday, October 4th, and the next step is taken?
That's correct.
Which is, what?
I am not able to answer that question.
Not sure with that part, okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. We'll have to find out what the next step would be after that.
Sure, it's just a process.
Yeah, it's a, I know it's a process. I just don't know what the next step is after that.
Exactly.
Yep. Nope, great, okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
Anything?
Thank you, you've been very busy.
Very busy.
Yes.
We are very sorry to see you go.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Especially after the momentum you've created in the last couple of months.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And we wish you the best of luck in your new position.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, item number 7F is the City Manager's Report.
Riverfront Power Plants, the EPA is on-site, and the contracted asbestos removal has started. This is a circular removal project undertaken at no cost to the city. A fact sheet can be found online. Our Brown Fields cleanup project is on hold until the steam plant project is complete. We do have someone coming up next week about a, we'll be submitting a cleanup grant, actually at the next meeting, we'll have the public hearing, but we have someone coming up next week to help us with getting things together for that grant. For broadband, Charter and Spectrum and the Maine Connectivity Authority had a kickoff meeting in August. Charter is still on the design and pole permits phase. They will build out in sections as the pole permits are approved. Consolidated is building out their Phidium fiber in Caribou with 181 miles of new fiber. And we will be having monthly progress meetings by Zoom on this. I had one last week. I did see over the weekend, they had trucks out working on Phidium, too. So this is because Consolidated received different contracts through the ARDOF federal projects, so they need to run fiber in Caribou to reach those areas that they have contracted with to get. The Oakland Road Solar Project, the city received information this week regarding the lease payment on the solar field, so I'm hoping that we'll be getting some money from that soon. It's not a lot, but it's something. Events and Marketing, the Central Rustic Chamber Oktoberfest was held at the airport on September 14th. The Chamber was grateful for great weather and a good crowd. The 50th Annual Fall Arts and Crafts Fair will be held October 19th and 20th. Planning has started for the Small Business Saturday, November 30th, and the Christmas season. Land Bank, I did actually have an email back and forth with Tuck O'Brien from the Maine Land Bank today, and he's attending a conference out in St. Louis, and we're going to talk after that. He's also had several different conversations about what our concerns as a community have been, which is with tax-acquired property, what are the challenges that we would have with trying to use some of that property for a land bank? So we'll be talking about that also. Chapter 13 Rewrite, the planning board hopes to have something to the City Council in October. The Federal American Rescue Plan Act, all funds need to be committed by December 31st, and that is on tonight's agenda. Light Cleanup, our Code Enforcement Officer, John Gibson, provided an update tonight. The Birdseye Cleanup, we had a DECD Brownfields Revolving Loan Fund application that was submitted on Friday, and I did get confirmation from them today that it has been received. So those will be evaluated along with the other applications that they have received, and this would be to clean up PCB soils that remain at the Birdseye site so that we can have a clean site to work with. The EPA is working with us on providing a reused economic development plan for Birdseye, and that will be at no cost to us also. The Caribou Development Committee, they will be having a work session on October 8th on Riverfront and Birdseye reuse plans, and you do have a flyer in your, at your seat about that. I got that on Saturday, and the council is invited to that. The Riverfront Master Plan, the draft environmental assessment will need to have a public review for 30 days. Since there is a riverine area in the project area, the city will need to complete an eight, what they call an eight-step review. We hope to have the final notice to proceed from MBRC soon so we can go out to bid for the master plan. Facade Improvement Program, fall applications are due by September 30th for commercial properties in the downtown and RC2 TIF districts. Caribou Economic Growth Council met on August 22nd. All loans are current. The next meeting is September 26th. Fire Station Renovations, the Municipal Buildings Committee findings are on tonight's agenda. Police Station Artifacts has presented a new design based on the last meeting that has been sent to the all members of the City Council. River Road, Versant is working to get the lines off of the old pole and move them to the new pole.
They did that, Penny.
Oh, they did? Is the old pole still there?
We went by and saw that the lines were moved, and the top of the pole was cut off of the old pole, so they could probably get ready to move that.
Great. Investment Policy, City Council Investment Committee, I mean, it's only taken six years.
That's all?
I mean, you know, it was six years that the, we had the issue, but at least by winter, it'll give the plows a lot more room to work there.
Yep.
Investment, City Council Investment Committee met and commended our Finance Director, Carl Grant, for his excellent work on the city's invested funds. Airport, Seth Lovely from StanTech, the airport engineer, attended the September, oh, it wasn't the 27th, last Tuesday, Citizens Airport Committee Meeting. The new LED streetlights, the Highway Protection Committee findings are on tonight's agenda. Comp Plan Update, the planning board has drafts of several sections of the comprehensive plan. 15 Prospect Street, the contractor has hauled away the debris from the fire-damaged structure. Water Street Fire, the mayor and deputy mayor asked at the agenda meeting that staff provide an update on this property. It is included here in the packet, and I'll go through that after we go through the chart here. Age-Friendly Efforts, several great initiatives taking place at age-friendly Caribou, and everyone is welcome to attend their meetings. Personnel Changes, Judy Kleeman has left her position. John Gibson has taken a position with County of Rustic. Both positions are currently open for application. Rustic Waste Solutions, several fires in the landfill this week due to batteries. So at our next meeting, which is Friday, we will be discussing proper disposal and hoping to come with some solutions to try to keep these batteries, like this, they're like the, I guess rechargeable type batteries, out of the landfill, because it's very discouraging and scary when the landfill is on fire. Cary Medical Center, the 100th anniversary of Jefferson Cary's vision for a Caribou Community Hospital has been celebrated in 2024. And other updates, the city clerks attended the Clerks Networking Day last week, and we will have a City Council Candidate Forum on October 2nd. It'll be here in the City Council chambers, and if you have questions for the three candidates vying for two seats, we have a box out front if you want to make an anonymous question. You can also email questions to me. I'd like to have them before Friday, because I need to work on them this weekend to get ready for next week. Administrative Approvals, the Par and Grill and County Farms Market liquor licenses were renewed. So you do have, on page 38, you have updates on our different grant projects, and we have added the one that Danielle was able to secure for the Center for Tech and Civic Life, which is to help with her elections and to make that a safer process. We have a meeting tomorrow on the Library MCA Grant also. So 7 Water Street, this is on page 39. So going through the history, there was a fatal fire, we sent a legal notice of condemned building, and we sent a second notice. Then we received notice that the mortgage was discharged by North State Federal Credit Union because they had forced-place insurance on their exposure to the loan, so they discharged it, and they were done with the property. So we sent a final notice of a condemned building, and then the owners filed for bankruptcy. The code officer presented them, presented that 7 Water Street was a dangerous building and requested that a public hearing be set. And then in the, at the end of May, there was a tax lien certificate for 2023. In June, there was a discussion at the City Council whether to bring a dangerous building public hearing for 7 Water Street. In July, there was a public hearing at the City Council meeting. The vote was two to five to declare 7 Water Street a dangerous building, so the motion failed. In September, an offer from the owners to convey the property at 7 Water Street to the city of Caribou with a quitclaim deed without covenant. The city, so before you would need to do that, the city would need, what they call all appropriate inquiries would need to be made before the city should take title to any property to make sure that you are aware of whatever contamination would be there, what would be, what would need to be taken to remediate any hazards that were present at the property. This, if you don't do that, then you risk that you would be ineligible for grant funding to clean it up. So this was discussed at two different meetings of the City Council, and no action was taken. So in November, a proposal was sought to review the property and submit a report of recommendations related to the building demolition required, temporary shoring required, required for demolition, retaining structure and guardrail needed at the existing road and sidewalk, and the, an opinion of probable cause. This proposal did not include an evaluation of adjacent properties and assumed that the foundation wall at the stream would remain in its current condition. This was received and forwarded to the council. In November, a waiver of foreclosure was issued for 7 Water Street. On Christmas Eve, a taller fence was installed, a 7 Water Street for the safety of the traveling public. Also, I guess I would say, which I don't have in here, is there would be a tax lien certificate for 2023 also filed at the registry. And in August, at the last meeting, I believe it was Counselor Lovewell, asked staff to determine if this property could be categorized as a brownfield and eligible for cleanup funding. So staff communicated with the Maine DEP, and indeed, this could be classified as a brownfield, and Maine DEP will include this property in the list of properties for Brownfields Assessment Funding. And that's where we are today. Yes?
On that last part, does the city have to have ownership of the property to apply for the, oh, we don't, we don't have to take it?
Yep.
Good news, so we can determine.
Yeah, so it's going to go on the list for DEP Assessment Funding, so they're applying for a grant to do several different properties, and so when they reached out to see if Caribou would be interested in being part of that grant application, of course, I said yes, because we have lots of properties that would fit the definition of a brownfield. And if we can get funding that we would need to do these assessments to figure out, you know, what it would take to clean up any hazards and... know, what it would take to clean up any hazards and haul off, like, damaged structures, it's very difficult there because you have two structures on, like a structure on either side, so there's additional consideration there. So it was very good news that they were willing to include that in the application.
Because you have multiple owners and...
Correct.
Would the big birds have to sign off on anything done on the property?
Yeah, but I'm sure that they would, you know, because it's in their interest to get this cleaned up as well, so. It isn't usually an issue to have someone do that. The other thing is, I mean, they still haven't paid the taxes. You, it'll be up for foreclosure again in November, so the council can decide at that time whether they're going to waive foreclosure or not. If you take, if the, if the city acquires a property through the automatic lien foreclosure process, it's a different process for determining and making all appropriate inquiries because you're not accepting the property, like, you're not intentionally doing it. It's not a positive action, like, it's, when you, when you take it by automatic lien foreclosure process, it, it's something that's going to happen automatically. So you don't have that same standard. It's like, we weren't in any kind of, we didn't limit ourselves from applying for grants and make ourselves ineligible for, like, the power plants and Bird's Eye because those were taken through the automatic lien foreclosure process. So that, it takes a long time for them to go through their, like, all appropriate inquiries to make sure that there are not some parties down the road that could be respons, you know, financially responsible for the cleanup, but the city doesn't have any responsibility for that because you're taking it as part of an automatic process.
But if we, if we take it through the, for the voluntary transfer of the deed? Does that now kick in the all inquiries process?
Correct. Although, if you let it foreclose and then get the deed from them, you're just cleaning up a title.
Okay.
See what I'm saying? If, if you obtain...
I think so.
The property through the automatic lien foreclosure process, but then you say, okay, we're going to get it cleaned up, and we're going to get it back on the tax rolls, or we're going to do something with it, and we're trying to clean up the title. And then you contact the owner and say, if you're still willing to, you know, give us the quitclaim deed without covenant for the property, then you're cleaning up the title of the property, not necessarily taking the property.
Okay.
In some kind of exchange.
Sure would be nice to get that taken care of this year.
Right, and it was a very good suggestion by Counselor Lovewell at the last meeting because I hadn't really thought about it because I'm always thinking of, like, the prior use being the issue that it would qualify as a brownfields project because a lot of times it has to do with, you know, activities that, that happened at the location because of the prior use of the property that caused the contamination, like asbestos-wrapped pipes or PCB soils. I'm not thinking, okay, now it's a hazard because of a fire. And so they're like, oh, no, it's a fi, you know, it's a fire-damaged building, and that was, I have to give Counselor Lovewell that credit for that. So, we've got that in process now.
Good news.
Thank, any other questions? Do you have any other questions?
Not for me.
Questions from anyone on the screen? Okay.
Did the council want me to clarify the question about a regional code officer?
You can.
Okay, I guess, I mean, I take my direction from you.
Sure.
Not the others.
Sure.
So, regional code officer. I was asked by the Arustic Republican, what are your options if you can't hire a code officer? The option, if we can't hire a code officer, would be that NMDC is trying to get a regional code officer that can supplement what we're doing. It's still better than having no code officer, even though we have budgeted for a full-time code officer, and that is our preference. But I was asked, what, what are your options if you can't find someone? And that is my answer. We have to look for whatever...
And that turned into, this is what we're going to do.
Yeah, that, that's, we have it advertised, and we are hopeful that we are going to get someone full-time because it is, John, would you agree it's a full-time job?
Absolutely.
And that's a little extra.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, under new business ordinances and resolutions, we have item number 8A, and that is the approval of a business license for Troy Reynolds. Mr. Troy Reynolds, DVA renewal by Anderson is requesting permission to go door-to-door selling his products. A peddler's license in the City of Caribou requires council permission per the charter found in Article 3, Peddlers and Hawkers, Section 7, 301, 304. What are the wishes of the council?
Move to approve the license, or the permit, I guess, motion to approve the license, I guess.
Okay, and...
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Just to clarify, is this the same, this is just a renewal of the one that we approved?
He never made it, so he started over again.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha, okay, okay. Further questions or discussion?
Just, I wanted to click, I wanted to ask the same question. This seemed very familiar to me.
Yeah.
So we've seen it before, and I remember we had a discussion that if you look at the ordinance, it appears to completely prohibit door-to-door things. But then I was corrected to say, you, you can go door-to-door to sell or to solicit, but you can't go in the house. Does that make sense? Does that?
Uh huh.
Okay. Wanted to make sure that I remember that correctly. I think that was the distinction.
Yeah.
So we're, we're good on this then.
And perhaps we need to change the wording of the charter to state that better.
I can't remember if it's in the charter or if it's in the ordinance.
Door-to-door does seem door-to-door, or in the ordinance.
Yeah.
So we need to maybe look at that up.
Okay.
Okay.
Minor change.
Minor change, yeah.
Couple of.
Yep. All right. No further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
No, she, looks like she's frozen.
She's frozen.
She's in the woods.
Okay. Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
No, she's gone.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So we'll just have to make note that one counselor was frozen. Okay. AB is an introduction of ordinance number eight of the 2024 series on general assistance updates, and that's on page 45 of your packet.
All this requires tonight is an introduction, so I'll introduce ordinance number eight. That's all we need, right?
You have to read the whole thing.
Oh, I do have to, oh. Introduce ordinance number eight, 2024 series to amend, Chapter 17, General Assistance, short title. An ordinance amending general assistance guidelines instead of public hearing on ordinance eight, number eight, 2024, for October 28, 2024.
Second.
It's a long motion.
We don't even have to, well, we're just introducing it, we don't need to vote on it.
Oh, yeah, we don't need to vote on it, actually, do we?
Yeah, no.
We're just introducing it.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you for introducing that.
That's mine, yeah.
No, that's fine.
We just scheduled it.
And we'll go ahead and schedule the public hearing. Perfect.
Just introduce it then.
Okay, item number 8C is Marshall Avenue Pole Permit Request from Versant Power. That's on page 50 of your packet. Versant Power has applied for a pole to be placed within the city's right-of-way on Marshall Avenue. They have provided the following documents for our review and approval. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at those. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve the utility location permit from Versant Power on Marshall Avenue.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion?
I noticed in this write-up that it said no public notice is required, and I'm just curious, I'm looking at the map, and I can't really figure out if this is on somebody's lawn or where exactly this is, but can somebody clarify whether landowners are typically informed that there's going to be a pole placed in their yard or near their yard in the right-of-way?
I have no idea what, what person does, except that they send this here, and I'm guessing they sent it at this time because they have the new wires put onto the new pole on the river road. I guess they think we would be in cheerful mood.
But I mean, they own all the poles that are on everyone's property.
But they're in, but they're in the city's right-of-way. That's why they have to get our, have to get permission of our elected officials to do that.
Yeah, but it's our right-of-way, so...
Yeah.
There's no, there's no risk of somebody getting upset with us.
Oh, contraire. People are upset about everything every day, all the time, but it's in our right-of-way.
Sounded good, though.
But it sounded very positive.
Inspires.
Okay.
Okay. Good? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell is no longer with us right now. Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number 8D is a discussion of the remaining ARPA funds. These are the funds that need to be committed by December 31st of this year. Where are we, pages? Starts on page 58 of your packet. So it looks like we have a few different requests that are in here as part of your packet. There's a request from Fire and Ambulance. There is a request from the Business Investment Group, and then there is the motion we discussed at our last meeting, discussed at our last meeting.
What page is that, 63?
Um, yes, and that was a discussion of the motion passed to use ARPA funds to help cover the costs of salary increases in the Police Department.
Okay.
Did you want to hear from the Fire Chief? He's here.
So the Fire Department's request is on page 58 and 59.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilor, City Manager. Just to start off with a brief history, in 2021, previous Fire Chief drafted up a letter asking that, for a side-by-side and rescue bogan for the department and for the needs of the department. 2022, we moved into some quotes, and those items were placed on order, and just availability of the items kept the dates moving forward and moving forward. When I took Fire Chief's position in May of 2023, we're still working on getting those, the side-by-side and the trailer. I started mid-2023 on securing and redoing the quotes on everything, and finally, in January of 2024, we did get a side-by-side and a rescue trailer and a rescue bogan delivered to the department. My goal at that time was just to get those items secured, and moving on forward, then learned, as far as lettering for the trailer, a lot of it needs to be NFPA compliant, and that means reflective material because when that piece of equipment is dispatched, the majority of the time it will be on the roadway and not able to pull that into a driveway or anything so we can unload the side-by-side and the trailer. So I've been working with Boulevard Graphics since the beginning of the year to get this trailer decal. Again, not only for identification purposes, but most importantly, for safety. The safety of our crew and the equipment is most important. So the current quote on the 26-foot rescue trailer with the majority of it being NFPA compliant, that means Chevron material on the back, which is the, if you notice, the diagonal lines that go down. And that would be doing the driver and passenger side with a reflective material, the back gate, all full color print reflective, and then a UV over laminate in the front and rear, the front regular print with UV over laminate on that also. This also includes the wash, prep, and install of the material. The UV over laminate is to ensure that none of the print fades over the years and that the print will last the life of the trailer. The trailer is an aluminum trailer, so we should get maximum life out of that piece of equipment. So I also learned in the last City Council meeting that there was some ARPA funds still available, so I'm here tonight just seeing if the council will approve the funding for the decal work of this trailer, which is at $7,488. So if you have any questions on that, and we've provided some, this is pretty much a rough rendering of what it would look like, but most likely that, that'll be the end product that you see there on the pictures, so.
Looks pretty sharp.
Questions or comments from the council?
Is this the trailer that you have right now?
Yes.
That you want to put the decal on?
Yep. Yeah, it's housed at the station right now, so.
Okay.
And it houses our side-by-side, and then we have a rescue bogan that can be converted for summer and winter use. That is housed right in there.
Okay.
Was Boulevard Graphics the only one that would, would quote on this? Was there anybody else that gave you any quotes?
Nobody else. I didn't get quote from anybody else, no.
Did you reach out to anyone else?
So for what needed to be done, like the back, the Chevrons and everything, I, I don't believe anybody else could have provide, provided that, that type of, because a lot of it is printed material, and the, the reason for the increased costs on the decals to begin with is because of the reflective material. It adds quite a bit of cost.
Does the whole trailer need to be covered? Like, each side and the back? I mean, does the whole thing need to be covered, or do you just need a decal stating that it's the Caribou Fire Department?
Well, NFPA standards, the rear of the vehicle or the rear of the trailer needs to have over 50% of it in reflective material.
Okay.
What's considered over 50%, but most, all rescue equipment that you see, especially fire trucks that have Chevron material, you, you end up doing the whole back of it because it's just the area. As far as the sides, in my opinion, needs to be some sort of reflective there because traffic approaching, if, if you're parked in a roadway and you have a roadway intersecting, you really want some reflective material there to, to show that you're there. There is some lighting, obviously, to the trailer, but if the lighting was to fail for, for some reason, at least then you have reflective material for, for backup to identify the trailer.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So given that we're not being asked to decide anything tonight, I did have some questions on the Business Investment Group invoice. I mean, this, this travel was two years ago and beyond, and before that. Do we, did we have a contract with Business Investment Group to reimburse them for travel?
I do not believe so. I believe that what we had was a contract for the broadband study.
For 159?
Correct.
That they just passed through to Pioneer?
Correct.
All right.
That is the only thing we ever had a contract for that I can ever remember, was just that one amount. There was nothing built in for anything like this.
The other somewhat disturbing thing is that the detail on this invoice is from Caribou Utilities District.
Right, because it was, well, the Utilities District, remember, they were looking to be the home for that. They were going to offer it as a utility, like water and wastewater, then they were going to have their broadband or fiber division, and they had their charter changed to do that, so.
I guess my point is that the invoice is from Business Investment Group.
Correct.
They're the ones asking for the money, but CUD incurred the expense, so it's all mixed up.
I'm just, I'm presenting what I have. Yeah, and what, the, the City Council worked with the Business Investment Group, you know, the Business Investment Group was working with Pioneer, they were working with the Utilities District. You're trying to make everything happen.
And it's also very difficult to finally get a final report out of them. The, the Broadband Committee fought hard and long to do that, so...
But they have asked me to present this.
Okay.
And I'm presenting it. Oh, yes.
I would like...
Oh, yeah, Jan was on the Utilities District, yeah.
Please?
Do you want to come to the microphone? Just, yeah.
If there's something we're missing, please let me know.
Yeah, because there might be something that we're missing, yeah.
Because I'm about to make a motion to remove from consideration this invoice, so...
I don't want to cause conflict. Jan Marchison, I used to be on the CUD board. There was, how do I want to say this? There were funds approved by the CUD to pay for some expenditures, not so much by the... There were funds approved by the CUD to pay for some expenditures, not so much by the, from BIG, but from, from.
From themselves.
Mr. Patrick and others.
Yes.
That, I believe, were paid for. This may be another invoice that did not make that cut, and I would suggest you might cross-reference this invoice with invoices that may have already been paid with other funds that CUD had done, just to make sure it's not something that fell through the.
I did ask about that, because they, because the CUD Board appro, because I go to their meetings, because they have them here. And so, I followed up the next day to see if they were.
I'm assuming it's a different.
Anything was fiber, but those invoices were just water and wastewater, and there wasn't anything for fiber, is what I was told, for what was presented for this type of invoice.
But either way, we shouldn't be charged with this anyways, because this wasn't part of an arrangement we had with them, so it would be paid for through the CUD.
It was not any formal arrangement, I don't believe.
Correct.
The only reason we.
I'm assuming it's something that fell through the cracks, but I just.
Yeah, I think it was something, I think there was some of the travel expenses, and then as, you know, I guess, they're not moving forward on fiber, so I think they're just trying to close the books on fiber.
Close all the books.
And, and, and looking at, like you said, like, what expenses have kind of fallen through the cracks here with that.
I would say that's the responsibility of their group.
Thanks for the perspective from the CUD.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan.
Yeah. Joan, did you have something?
Yes, as I remember it, you're right, we only agreed to the 159,000 for the study. And then, my, my knowledge of it was that they jumped the gun a little bit, and bought it some things, and because it didn't go through, they wanted to see if the city would reimburse them for the money that apparently, Juka Patrick paid for himself. That's the way I understood it. And they, we've already been through this, that we were not going to pay for that, for that portion of the bill. The only thing that we agreed to was 159.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yep, for sure.
I remember correctly.
I think it might be a good idea to just clean this up right now.
I move that we remove from consideration the invoice from Business Investment Group to the application of ARPA funds.
Second that.
Second.
Yep. Moved and seconded a couple of times. All right, further discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and then the third item up for discussion, we did talk at the last City Council meeting about using remaining ARPA funds for wages for the Police Department that would help with resulting in less funds being raised through taxation, so.
But there was no number given in the motion, that's correct.
Correct.
So, that's why we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion to use ARPA NEU funds in the amount of 67,488, 64, to fund police wages as presented.
I second. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So, this would mean that the Fire Department would not get funding for the decals of 7,000, whatever. Is that what, is, am I understanding the motion correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Further questions? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
You were the second, correct? No, you were the, I'm sorry, Jennifer was the second.
I made the motion.
I'm sorry, yes, yes. Where was I? Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number nine is reports and discussion by mayor and council members. Let's start on Zoom tonight. Councilor Lovewell, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Thank you. I actually have a good service spot for one second, so this probably a good time for me. Actually, I would like to mention something that has been a little bit on my mind, and I just kind of want to throw it out into the community for discussion at this moment. I know I've talked to several councillors about this, and just kind of maybe to put some food for thought, but I know we're having some, some issues with other towns sending people up on our bus systems that are causing some of the homelessness, the crime problems that we're having, some of the drug problems we're having, and I don't know that we're finding a lot of other people that are necessarily using that transit form a lot. So, I'm going to recommend possibly looking into eliminating the bus system into Caribou, maybe just having it stop at Prescott Isle for now, and to see if that, that we're having, that's a solution. I want, yeah, I know it's a little extreme, but I'm hoping that maybe we'll see some, some change in this input, the people that we have being shifted, parted up from the lower areas of the state that are now taking up residence on our street. I'd really like to be able to tell the problem, and I just think that that might be a possible solution, so, like to get that out before you guys, and maybe start that discussion.
To kind of jump on that conversation, I think, you know, we do have some people from surrounding communities who are working on some different types of ordinances around some of this as well, and I think, you know, a couple of years ago, we did try to maybe come together, several communities, to discuss some of these issues, and it kind of went by the wayside, and I think maybe that's something we need to look into again, is maybe a joint effort between some communities as well, so maybe we can look into how we could do that, and just have that conversation, so that we're all on the same page, you know, neighbors helping neighbors, so to speak.
Great idea.
Deputy Mayor, Terrio, did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, not this time.
Councilor Bagley?
Thank you. So, I just wanted to give everybody an update on the Caribou Development Committee meeting that occurred on the 18th. You have a handout in your, in your packet that Penny printed out for us. I just like, like to write down some notes here and have it on record. One of the highlights of the meeting was a focus on exploring the possibility of putting in curb cuts or traffic circles along the Route 1 bypass, and this is intended to make accessible those land areas, those lots that are in behind and are currently kind of marooned by the bypass, and that cannot be developed in any commercial sense. And so, there have been discussions with DOT for the last few weeks, and we have, we turned a hard no during our last meeting to a very solid, don't count on it. Maybe, possibly. So, I think the DOT is, they're in a position of wanting to control that corridor for traffic to flow through. Yeah, our objectives are different. We want to have, you know, areas where we can develop businesses there, and so, there looks like there may be a possibility that we can do one or two curb cuts or traffic circles, and DOT can live with it, and we can have frontage roads along those lines. But anyway, I wanted to let everybody know, the Development Committee is working very hard on this, because we see it as a huge benefit to Caribou, if we can open up these marooned lots. The second thing on the committee that I wanted to announce, and you have a handout that Penny provided here on the icebreaker event, it's more, they're more taking the shape of work sessions than, the original meeting was an icebreaker, where we all get together and try to meet each other from all the different departments and all that. This one is going to be more focused. We're going to sit down, we're going to talk about specifically, we're going to talk about the Bird's Eye redevelopment, and the Riverfront redevelopment, and bring all the people together. We've done all of our brainstorming, we've prioritized some ideas, it's time to decide something and move forward, and so, we're in that thought process now, in that mode of thinking, that we, now we want to meet and decide stuff. So, I highly encourage all council members to attend and support this activity and provide your perspective. I have to be out of town that day, so I'm asking for a volunteer from among us to fill in for me for this meeting, so if you're available and willing to do that, please let me know, and, but you have the details here. It'd be best if all councillors, they would really love all councillors to attend and show you support for this. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
Yeah, just, well, I was at that meeting, at the, that turned.
Did I characterize it properly?
Properly, we did, probably with an hour and a half, and it, it.
Yeah.
We come out feeling a little bit, a little bit better about that, that was a good opportunity. I'm glad to see that you're continuing with the board. We had the Investment Committee meeting, Penny summarized that, and the manager's report, that went well. Thank you, Carl. And one of the things, mentioned the grasslands coming up, that's one of the biggest economic days of Caribou, isn't it?
Yeah.
The grass there, or maybe the bigger cloths, so.
Yeah, I got over 130 vendors right now.
Wow, that's great.
That plays a pack all the time, it's great.
Yeah.
Hopefully, good weather, so everybody gets out and spends their money in Caribou.
Yeah, definitely.
So, that's, I think that's all I have, for now, I guess.
Thank you. Councilor Kelly?
I'm good for now.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Okay. Our next regular meeting is October 28th. We do have some executive sessions on the agenda this evening, so what are the wishes of the council?
Open to executive session, hardship poverty abatement pursuant to 36 MRSA 8412E.
I second it? Okay, moved and seconded. Discussion? Bagley?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Lovewell?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. So, this concludes our open forum this evening. Thank you all for being here.
Jan, do you have just a second? Certainly.
Yeah, I'll take just a little break. Everyone turn your mics off, please.
So, what if you could go?
Gary, what are you doing?